United Township Commission, the Board of Order. And we'd ask you to join with us in the Pledge of Allegiance to the Flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America. I consider Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And first, I'd like to welcome Justin with us, who has joined us. Tom McDermott has moved out of the area, so we'd welcome Justin to our Board of Planning Commissioners. Thank you. Okay, the first order of business is the approval of minutes from last time we met, which was February 18th. Do I have a motion?
So move.
A second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Minutes are approved. At this point, we have a session available for any of the public that likes to make any comments on anything that's not listed on the agenda. So I ask if there's anybody that has any comments. Hearing that, we'll move on to stormwater management plans. The first one is LTPC 333, Crossway Church Stormwater Management Site Plan. And this is a briefing item. And who's here to speak?
Is it okay just over here?
Yeah. And if you will, please introduce yourselves so that the audience knows.
Hi, good evening. Brian Cooley with D.C. Earn Associates. Along with me is David Howell, who's representing Crossway. Just review the plan. We can answer any questions at the planning commission heads. So it's a stormwater man for a Crossway church. So they're proposing 479 grave sites. This is the existing parking lot. The existing church is just off the page here. Proposing 479 grave sites. There's going to be a proposed access drive that runs, connects to the existing access drive, which runs out to the mainland over here. There will be four proposed parking spaces here. It's mainly an ADA-type parking lot. There'll also be a proposed walking trail that runs through this area. That'll connect the existing parking lot to the grave site and then the proposed access drive over here. On the left-hand side up to the top, there is a proposed shed mainly for maintenance equipment for the church itself. From a stormwater perspective, there is a proposed rain garden at the bottom end of the site here. The rain garden will treat the majority of the access drive as well as the parking lot. There is a small portion of stormwater in this site, restrained to the existing basement facility down on the corner of the page. And that basement will remain as is. We are requesting two modifications as part of this plan from the stormwater ordinance. One is pipe size. So the ordinance requires a 15-inch pipe underneath a vehicular loading area, in this case, the existing access drive. We're proposing this specific storm pipe to be eight inches instead. The reason for that is there's a small lawn drain here to collect stormwater. I think this pipe to the rain garden, the eight-inch pipe has capacity to convey the required storm events, and there's adequate cover underneath the access drive. The other waiver requesting is for loading ratios. So this is in a carst area, which it is prone to sinkholes. So the ordinance requires five to one for the total drainage area, and then three to one just for the impervious drainage area. We're proposing 12.2, which of course exceeds the 5.1 for the total area. And we're proposing five to one as opposed to three to one for the impervious area. The 12.2 is again higher than the five to one. Some of that is the existing grass area, which drains directly to this facility. But again, the impervious loading ratio, five to one is slightly greater than three to one. We do have the Township Engineer Letter, which was dated in May 8th. We are in the process of addressing those comments. As noted in the letter, the Township Engineer does recommend approval of the two modifications. And as I mentioned, we're working on the comments now, and we plan on resubmitting in the very near future. From a conservation district standpoint, this project's under an acre of disturbance, so no MPDS permit. But we are required to receive district approval. We did receive a comment letter from them, just a few minor comments, which again, we plan on addressing very soon. Does the planning commission have any questions for myself or for David?
Is Ben on the line?
He's on the line.
Okay. I'd like to ask him if he has any comments, and we'll ask the commissioner if he has any. Or if he has any statements to make.
Good evening, everyone. Are you able to hear me okay?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, great. You know, I agree with how Brian has laid out the project scope and where things stand. I think it may probably be the case that the applicant will be requesting one or two more waivers. Would you agree with that, Brian?
In reviewing the letter, I'm not aware of any additional modifications. But I'm not sure if that was discussed previously or not.
Well, I guess the one that typically people will bump on is having to install private stormwater facilities in accordance with Penn.Pub 408. But that's fairly common that people do request waivers of that private stormwater facility. So I'll let you figure that one out.
Okay.
But I would encourage the planning commission to hold off on taking any further action until we're sure that no other waiver requests will be needed. But certainly, you're welcome to take whatever action you deem appropriate. The developer has been working with us for a very long time. Crossway Church has been a good partner in the township. They are using some of their already proposed impervious area for the future, using some of that for this, and then doing additional stormwater management as well. So I think they've been working diligently to address all the potential stormwater issues that we have.
Okay, thank you, Ben. Any questions from the planning commission members?
Mr. Chairman, before we discuss stormwater, I do want to discuss zoning because I'm having an issue right now with seeing this as a permitted use, such as a cemetery. John or Ben, can you just talk us through? Let me just back up. So we're in the R1 district, right?
Yeah, I apologize. I'm not sure what's in each district.
I think it's industrial.
I believe it's R1. We're right here, right?
It should be noted on the plan, I would think.
Yeah. And then according to the zoning ordinance, a cemetery is not a permitted use in R1. It's only permitted in the open space campus district. So, John, has any determination been made? Do you permit such a use?
John, do you want to handle that? Or do you want me to take it from a sort of longer-term view? We've had discussions until last year before John took over formally. We had discussions with Tom Daniels. Or John, do you want to handle this question?
Go ahead, Ben. My fault, but I need to.
Okay. So when the church first approached us with the idea of establishing burial plots, and even it was in a different location than where it's proposed now, that was the initial zoning questions. Is this a cemetery or is this a graveyard? Graveyard more commonly is understood to be part of a church site, a place where members of the congregation and their loved ones are interred. A cemetery then differently would be open more as a commercial use, you might say, something where people would purchase plots, just members of the public would purchase plots for the interment of their loved ones. And so we confirmed long ago that this indeed would be a graveyard, that only members of the congregation would be purchasing plots, if you will. I don't even know if purchasing is the proper term for it. But only members of the congregation would be allowed to inter their loved ones at this location. It would not be open for commercial, general public use. So that put it into what we already believe to be the definition of the places of assembly for purposes of worship and other, I don't know if activity is the right term, but uses that are typical accessory to a place of worship. And frequently, that involves education. In this particular case, it involves interment. Is a graveyard different from a cemetery? So my understanding is from our discussions over the last couple of years and going into last year and when we received this application, was that no additional zoning relief would be needed for this as an accessory graveyard use to the place of assembly, Crossway Church. So that would be my input on the zoning issue that you raised. John?
Thanks, Ben. I'm still having a hangup because if you go to the definition of cemetery in the zoning ordinance, it says "an area used or intended to be used for the burial of the deceased." There is no caveat or exception to private-public. So I guess I, where did that interpretation of like a graveyard come from? And are you aware of any other places of worship in the town that also have such an accessory use of a graveyard?
So I know that I was involved in a lot of those discussions, John. I can't recall pointed, you know, what I could point to right now as a citation of that definition. Certainly could work on trying to offer that to you. Or if it's appropriate, we could confer with our township solicitor, or John may feel like he would like to weigh in on this. And your other question is what other churches have graveyards in the township?
Yeah, if there is any other ones, yeah.
I can't, straight off the bat, think of any others that still exist. Churches that still exist with graveyards that still are known. So that's all I got for you at this time.
My suggestion would be, since this is a briefing item, we're going to be coming back, that we use that time to get some other clarification and anything. One of the questions is, is there a definition of graveyard in the zoning ordinance?
Currently, there is not.
Okay.
Cemetery, but not graveyard.
Okay. All right. Any other questions or comments from the?
Mr. Chairman, I just want to point out though that the way that the ordinance is written, that stormwater final plot approval can't move forward without any type of zoning being settled. But I think it would be, I would like for the township, or at least make the recommendation for the township solicitor to weigh in. I'm also open to a map amendment to, if the applicant was open to this, to change the zone to the campus open space where cemetery is a permitted use. Do you have any?
I would say with the expression that I made, that we take the time so that we know exactly what the condition is, what's our starting point, and then seek advice from the solicitor and so forth, so that we then know where we're starting from on this. Let's get clarity on that. So do you have a problem before our next meeting to make sure that we have that information? Because we're not taking any action. Okay, any other questions? Thanks.
Thanks for your time.
The next item of business is a subdivision development plan. This is LTPC 315, 1515 Ridge Road. This is a field change request, and this also is a briefing item.
Evening.
Thank you.
I'm Jim Boyer from D. M. Moore Associates. Yeah, this request centers around 1511 and 1515 Ridge Road. This lot here is 1511, and this lot here is 1515. Both of these lots were part of a two-lot subdivision that the township approved in 2022. And in 2024, Glenn, Lisa, Clark are also here tonight. They purchased Lot 2, which is 1511 Ridge Road. And we prepared a revised stormwater plan for that lot because they wanted to propose more impervious surface than the previous plan allowed. So this plan was processed through the township and approved. And this plan proposed some boulder retaining walls at the rear and the removal of an existing concrete wall on this lot. Once the improvements were completed, we prepared a record plan of those disrupted. And the boulder retaining wall that was proposed right around this area was moved closer to the property line. And the concrete, the short section of concrete retaining wall, which was to be removed, was left in place. So we worked with Ben Weber on analyzing the drainage patterns resulting from the field change. And we provided support that none of the drainage patterns are any different than what was originally proposed by the stormwater plan. In addition to that, the wall was placed partially within a five-foot utility easement. And based on our research, that was a five-foot area to allow the original developer to install utilities and also to allow PP&amp;L and Bell Telephone to install utilities and maintain them. But it's not an exclusive easement that would prevent the homeowner from making improvements or grade changes in the area. So we felt that this was a reasonable request to leave it as it is. And we do have a review letter from Ben dated May, or I'm sorry, March 31st, concurrent with the information provided.
Could you flip back to the final lot plan? This, we approved this in 2024, right?
The revised stormwater plan was in 2024.
Okay, I remember. I was unclear based on your letter and Ben's letter. So that plan proposed a retaining wall, correct, a new one?
Yeah, there were two sections of boulder retaining walls here and here.
Were those installed, or were they installed in a different location?
They were installed in a different location. They were installed as a single wall in this area right here. You can kind of see the gray color in there.
So it was adjacent to that existing wall?
It was close to the existing wall, but further to the rear of the lot.
So where is the existing wall? I'm still confused.
There's a short section of concrete wall right here.
Okay.
That was left over there. Before this subdivision plan was done, there was a single-family home with a pool area and pool house. And this concrete wall was a remainder of those improvements from the pool and pool house.
And so that wall just follows the property line?
Oh, yeah. The boulder wall follows the property line, and then the concrete wall is perpendicular to the property line.
I got it now. Thank you.
So are you saying, Jim, that the easement is more so for like a construction easement?
Yeah, yeah. This, I think the deeds for that date back to the 50s, I believe. And the one deed, it was a deed to allow the original developer, which is no longer in existence, to come in and install utilities on the lots after they were sold to individual owners. And then the other one allows PP&amp;L and Bell Telephone to install their lines and maintain them. But it was not an exclusive easement.
And does the township have any ownership of those easements?
No.
I personally don't see it as a township issue. It's the owner of said easements issue to enforce their easement.
And has any of the previous drainage situations, I guess primarily during construction, has that all been straightened out with the neighbors?
To the best of my knowledge, but Ben could probably speak to that better than I could.
Are we sure or hoping the grass will grow soon? Yeah, the vegetation on 1511 is almost everything that it should be. But then there's going to be grading and additional establishment of vegetation on 1515 Ridge Road. But that house is under construction. The site is going to be disturbed with construction activity for quite some time until everything is buttoned up and taken care of. Doing pretty vigilant observation on the ENS controls to prevent some of the sedimentation problems and concerns that were had from down-sloped property owners. These are people who live along Center Road. So we're doing our best to make sure that everybody's being appropriately protected and following the requirements of the plans and the permits. But we're not 100% out of the woods until we get everything done and buttoned up and get grass grown.
Were there drainage issues after we approved the 2024 final lot plan?
There were. There were. And we believe that they have been resolved at this point in terms of the impervious coverage, the drainage direction of where the runoff is going. But right now, we're trying to make sure that the erosion issue is properly managed.
So Ben, is there any reason that we would need to see something again? Because I saw that you had made the recommendation that, you know, we approve the changes to the approved plan. But is there anything, and I want the planning commission members to weigh in also, but is there any reason that we would need to see this again if we would choose to take action?
I don't think so, Glenn. I don't think that there are any more anticipated changes on the 1511 lot. That's pretty much sorted out, and that's where all these, that's where this field change request is focused, is what's on, primarily on 1511, the boulder wall and the allowing of the concrete retaining wall at that back rear corner to stay in place. I don't think that there's anything more that you would be seeing different by waiting another month to act on this.
Okay, thank you. Fellow planning commission members, any questions or comments on that? And what would be your pleasure relative, if we don't have any questions, and listening to what Ben just said, to go ahead and move this to an action item? I'd like your response to that.
I just have one question. So 1511 has been sold, and my understanding is that they approved the extension of that stone wall and the keeping of the, that, the old retained wall. That's why, because it looks like it's on the other side of the property?
Well, this is 1511. This is 1515.
Okay.
1511's been sold. The clerks purchased it and built their home. And this one is currently under construction.
So 1515 is comfortable with?
Yeah, because the original builder still owns that lot. I'm not sure if it's sold yet or not, but up until recently, he still owned it.
Okay, as long as somebody didn't come in and all of a sudden want it knocked down, and then that potentially changed things.
No.
The, I did just notice there was amended soils as a, it looked like as a stormwater management feature.
Yeah.
Did the retaining wall reduce the amount of amended soils that you're proposing?
We accounted for that in the calculations.
Okay.
Yeah, we actually extended the amended soils area here. Because of the additional impervious area and the boulder walls, we proposed additional amended soils there. And that was reviewed by the county.
I see.
I'd be supportive of going to an action item.
All right, then I would accept a motion then that we would move this to an action item and that would recommend approval to, that the supervisors approve the field change.
I'll make that motion, a double motion. So I make a motion to move 1511 Ridge Road to an action item and to make a recommendation to the board of supervisors that they approve the requested field change.
I'll second.
Any other questions? Any questions from the public? Okay. All those in favor of the motion? Say aye. Aye. Opposed? Okay, thank you.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Thank you, Jim. Okay. This is pass along Gretchen gave me this with a little note. So I'm going to consider this new business. But this is really just a notification that we received regarding emergency generators plan, required municipal notification. And we don't have to take any action, Gretchen?
No, I'm glad by Ben, and he said no, but just to give it to you since it had your name on it.
Okay, if you just want to take a look at that. Any other new business? Any old business?
I just, the, I know that we had previously at other meetings talked about the comprehensive plan waiting till, to?
And Bill's going to make, but we just said this not for the first meeting since Justin's come on, but so, any update on that?
At this point, considering we have business for June's meeting, we, Bill intends to be here for that one.
Okay.
And we're going to, he plans to give some information to the commission regarding the comp plan.
Okay.
If I can, a few other items?
Yeah, please.
We just recently found out, or I shouldn't have found out, the county has asked us to have a meeting with them in regards to the prison. I'm not sure what that's entailing yet, but it seems like maybe there's some forward movement there. As you recall, that'll probably be our next really big project that the commission's going to be dealing with. And I'm hoping at that meeting, I get some. And I'm hoping at that meeting, I get some sort of timeline. You know, they originally spoke about possibly in this year heading into the planning portion of the prison. Not sure if that's still what their timeline is or if it's bumped till next year, but I'm hoping to maybe get a little more information about that and of course, we'll provide that when we get it.
Okay. Any other announcements?
Where is this lot? The Greenfield Road owner?
We're not sure either.
Because they're proposing to...
I think that it's over in, off of Greenfield Road in East Lampeter Township.
Yeah, it's on that township.
We get these notifications every once in a while that just seem really out of place and, you know, things that are environmental in nature, they send a notice to every single municipality in the county. So it might not have any impact on us whatsoever or perhaps it's within a mile of our municipality and DEP says that they have to provide us these municipal notifications. Sometimes they're addressed to the planning commission, sometimes they're addressed to the director of planning and zoning and sometimes they ask for our input, sometimes they don't. So as long as it doesn't, it's just a notification that this is something that somebody's considering doing.
It must be because it's air quality related. They're proposing 164 generators for data center.
I know.
That is a lot of generators.
One of these AI data centers.
It's going to be a data center.
Oh.
Something that's substantial.
Okay.
They must have had a sale, buy one, get one free.
Are they just backup generators or are they?
They generate the energy for...
No, I think your letter said for power outages and keep the facility going.
It's backup power, okay.
See Taco Bell is fenced off now.
Yeah, I happened to notice that today. Taco Bell is going to demolish and then build a new prototype in the same.
Just another new Taco. Bigger and better appearance.
Yeah. They're going to call it Taco Bell.
Supreme turning the angle of it or something?
Yes, they are.
That's interesting.
I think we can probably end the formal meeting and then I have some other questions. We can do that. Do you have a motion for adjournment?
So moved.
Second?